Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky. Regular meeting, City Hall, June 15th, 2021, at 4:30. And we're going to start out with invocation prayer, and I'll hand over to Commissioner Carlos Bailey.
I'd like to welcome Reverend Avon Diem. She's the pastor or the Reverend at Monmar, Assembly of God, and she's going to give the invocation today.
You want to step up here, ma'am?
Shalawal now before the Lord, as I pray. Our Father in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come, it will be done on earth as it is in heaven. First, let me say thank you, on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measures of health. Thank you also for the ability to be involved in useful work, for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. In the scripture, you have said that citizen ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established this way, authority to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, and all our commissioners, and also for all the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this ensemble council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern, a thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who lived and work in and around our beloved city of Bowling Green. All this thing, in the precious name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. I would ask everyone to turn to the flag. And I'll just recite after I start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to bring some special guests in right now, and they're going to join us up here with the Board of Commissioners, so if we go ahead and open the doors, please.
Mayor, can I call the roll, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here. All right. So we have joining us right now is the Bowling Green Elite 2006 Boys Team, which have the distinct privilege, you're going to come all the way up here, you're going to join us on stage. They have won the Kentucky State Cup for our entire state, and also won the Great Lakes League of their league, and I believe they are undefeated? Is that what I understand?
Yes.
An undefeated team. So what you see here is Bowling Green finest and teamwork coming together. So hold here on stage, we're going to take a photo. And Coach, where are you? This is Coach Evan Sutherland.
How are you guys?
Coach, on behalf of excellence from the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, we give this token appreciation to you and your team, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And Commissioners, let's take a photo with them. I guess we'll take a seat, makes it a little bit easier. And we're going to have to tighten it in, guys. Let's hear it for BG Lee. Now, it's going to be a three-hour meeting, you guys are welcome to stay.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you very much.
What's the next step, Coach? Great Lakes?
We go to regionals in St. Louis next weekend. So we play Michigan, Ohio South, and Iowa. Well, there, we go to the semifinals.
Good luck. Carrie, the whole city of Bowling Green behind you, we are rooting for you.
Bring home a win. All right, thank you all.
I'll bring that trophy back to City Hall when you get it.
All right. I guess they're going to stay, so. All right, Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a need for a closed session, I'd like Ashley to read the reasons.
Pursuant to KRS 61-8101B, for the purpose of deliberations on the future acquisition of real property by the city, as publicity would likely affect the value of this specific piece of property to be acquired by the city.
I'll move, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right, any other comments, Mr. Mizel?
That's all, I have, Mayor, thank you.
All right, our first is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting, June 21st, 2021.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-83.
Municipal Order approving the promotions of Ryan Burnham to the position of Assistant Police Chief, Michael Kiefer to the position of Police Captain, and Jennifer Willis to the position of Police Sergeant in the Police Department.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey, or Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel, do you have anything to add here?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Chief Michael Delaney to come present this item, it's promotions in the Police Department. And before we do that, I'd like to thank Assistant Chief Major Charles Casey, recently retired after 21 years with the force. And Charles was instrumental, played a key part in bringing in the academy, took our own academy to Bowling Green, and has done some great work over the years for the Police Department. Like to thank him for all his years of service. And his vacancies, his departure, retirement creates opportunities for motion, so I'll turn it over to the chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Mr. Mizel, thank you for letting me come today. And I would echo that Major Charles Casey played an instrumental role in the development of our academy, so we appreciate his service not only to the department but also to the community. And these promotions tonight are not to fill his spot, but to fill the position because he can't be replaced. So, the first one, if they would stand as I call their names, Jennifer Willis. Recommended her be promoted to Sergeant. Jennifer Willis started with us in 2008 as a police cadet. And then she was a police officer in 2009. She's a graduate of Harrison County High School, Western Kentucky University. She's currently seeking her bachelor's in sociology. Jennifer's also been instrumental in several special assignments. She's a police training officer, a collision reconstructionist. She's been on an honor guard team, firearms instructor, and a bike officer. She's also taken several advanced courses to help her with the accident collision reconstruction. She's an instrumental part of our team. And this process was started with a recommendation from her supervision, then she had to take an oral board test, as all of them did, in an assessment center to even get to this process to be selected. So the first person is Jennifer Willis to Sergeant. Second person is Michael Kiefer. Sergeant Kiefer has been recommended to the position of Captain. Sergeant Kiefer also started with us as a police cadet in July of 2000. So a lot of trend there, we're growing them early and keeping them in the Police Department and bringing them up through the ranks. He remained a police cadet and was hired as a sworn officer in 2003. He's a Warren Central High School graduate, that's really why I selected, no, I'm just playing. Western Kentucky University he's attended has over 90 college hours. He's also been a member of our Explorer Posts, bike certified. He was on explosive recognition unit. He's a police training officer. He's been involved in honor guard on the technology team. And he's also a pilot for Unmanned Arrow Vehicle Unit. Sergeant Kiefer's been very instrumental in helping develop young cadets and bringing them up through the process too. So the second person I'd like to recommend is Sergeant Kiefer for the role of Captain. Last but not least, Captain Burnham. Captain Burnham's been an officer with us since 2004. He's a graduate of Bowling Green High School. He has his bachelor's from Western Kentucky University. He's a KLEC certified instructor, a defensive tactics instructor, a less lethal instructor, mountain bike instructor, firearms instructor, fitness instructor, a taser instructor. He's done it all. He's a graduate of the Academy of Police Supervision. He's also a graduate of the Criminal Justice Executive Development Program. He's been on honor guard, PTO. He was our CRT commander, our Critical Response Team Commander. He's been the range master, and he's also been the coordinator of our communications training program. So the third person I'd like to recommend is Captain Ron Burnham for the position of Major. Any questions?
Comments, questions, phone records.
Dragon as well, from Warren Central, from back in the day. And for Burnham, congratulations to all of you guys. And I'm not sure about the young lady that's back there, but congratulations to you as well. The only thing, Burnham, that I hold against you is you're a purple.
You purple's got your back.
All right, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-84.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Dennis Wolfe to the position of Fire Investigator in the Fire Department.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Hearing.
Okay, sorry. So we have another vacant position in our Fire Department and a promotion opportunity. I'd like to ask Chief Jim Morrow to come up and make his recommendation for this position.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, it's my pleasure to be here this evening to present a recommendation for promotion to Fire Investigator. The lateral transfer of Fire Investigator Chris Bates to Fire Suppression Engineer position created an opening for a Fire Investigator in the Prevention Division. We had six department members who expressed interest in this position. We reviewed their credentials, held discussions with their supervisors, and interviewed four candidates for this position. During this process, one candidate stood out above the others due to his recommendation of his shift commander, as well as the initiative he had already taken towards this position. He contacted Assistant Chief Prevention to inquire about what training would be required in this new position. And he'd already completed 40 hours of prerequisite training on his own time for acceptance into the National Fire Academy Fire Investigator Course. With that, I'd like to recommend Dennis Wolfe for the position of Fire Investigator. I would ask Dennis to stand and be recognized this time, but he is on vacation with his family and was unable to change his plans. So he's not here tonight, but would like to say a few things about Dennis. He was hired as a firefighter in 2016. He came to us after serving three years on the Owensboro Fire Department. Among his many certifications, Dennis holds his EMT certification as a fire apparatus operator, hazmat technician, and has his technician level one in ropes and swift water rescue. Dennis completed the promotional testing process this year for engineer, and he's currently on the promotional eligibility list. Dennis has demonstrated he has the desire and initiative for this position, and I'm confident and recommend him for this position, and feel that he'll be prepared to serve in his new role as a Fire Investigator. Could I answer any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
All right, no further questions, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order 2021-85.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Chitrevion Boyd to the position of Parks Facility Maintainer One in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to ask Erin Holesy, our HR Director, to come make this recommendation for appointment in our Parks Department.
Good afternoon. We do have two vacancies for the position of Labor Two in the Operations Division of Public Works due to a couple of resignations recently. Just as a reminder.
Parks.
I'm so sorry, Parks. That's the next one. Thank you for the correction. This was due to a, this was due to a resignation also, though. Why don't I get the right one in front of me so that I'm telling you the right thing? All right. This position is the Parks Facility Maintainer, I'm so sorry, which is 110. Later this afternoon, I do want to remind you that you will be approving the new pay schedule, which will move this position up one grade. So what is reflected in here, of course, is for June and FY '21, but there will be a new grade and a new wage for FY '22. This person is responsible for maintaining the cemetery, but also has a unique position where they are also helping with burials. So the type of equipment that they learn to use is very unique to the position of cemetery. We advertised this position internally and externally, and we had four applicants. As a result, we are recommending Chitrevion Boyd for this position. He is a graduate from Bowling Green High School, and he has been working as a part-time employee with the Parks Department since this March. So another great success story of part-time becoming full-time. Let me know if you have any questions.
Getting a promotion next month.
Hi, technically, yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations as well. The only thing I was going to say is I hold you responsible for being a purple.
Is that your family here tonight? Nice to have them in recognition. All right, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-86.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of David Webb to the position of Labor Two in the Public Works Department.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
Another recommendation for appointment in the Public Works Department. I'll ask Erin to cover this one as well. We've got one more after this one, I believe, so.
Okay, now we'll do public works. All right, I would like to ask David Webb to stand. So we have two vacancies in the Operations Division right now. The next vacancy, we will be filling at the next meeting on July 6th. This is another position that due to the career pathing, they come in as a Labor Two after six months and successfully completing their CDL. They get promoted to the OMT One position. And again, that will all be adjusting up starting July 1st, so you're going to get a quick promotion. We would like to recommend David Webb. He's a graduate of Franklin Simpson High School. He's the owner and operator of the Black Sheep Diner in Auburn. He's previously worked at businesses such as Everett Express and FedEx, as well as Shoals Technology in Tennessee. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Have family here tonight, too?
What's that?
Do you have family here tonight?
Yes, sir, my wife and her three kids.
Very nice, glad they're here. Congratulations. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-87.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Angela Harp to the position of Office Associate in the Fire Department.
So moved, second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
Another opportunity in the Fire Department due to resignation. Erin will make her recommendation for the Fire Department.
Great, I am recommending the appointment of Angela Harp. Angela, if you'd like to stand. This position, I think that Chief Morrow and the deputy chiefs will tell you is part of the heart of the Fire Department, particularly responsible for payroll and paying bills, and that's a really big job in this department. But we'll also do other activities as well, administrative activities, filing, greeting people into the building. So very important, and we're really glad to have Angela join us. She is a graduate from Warren East and also a graduate from WKU with a degree in English. She's a freelance writer and an editor, so we're really excited to have her join us. Let me know if you have any questions.
Have you published anything that we can enjoy this summer? Well, you let us know, and we will be your excited fans.
And I'm a teacher at East, so I love the East. So, do you have family here tonight? Well, we're glad you're here, and congratulations. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-88.
Municipal Order approving appointment of Leda Becker to the University District Review Committee.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. I will take this, this is an appointment specifically for a city employee. And so we've had city employees fulfill this role as the university district liaison. And I've talked to Leda, and she has graciously accepted to take this appointment if we vote her in. And she's our cultural liaison for our city and does a phenomenal job. Any further questions? All right, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-89.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Dr. John Fitz to the City County Board of Adjustments.
Move, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. I've called Dr. John Fitz, and he has honorably served our City Board of Adjustments, and this is a job that is very difficult to fill. And he has agreed to stay on and continue his work on the board. And so I'd like to nominate him tonight. No further questions, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-90.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Mike Simpson and appointment of Seth McLean to the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. These two members, I take, I am very excited to nominate them to the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. Seth McLean is actually a joint appointment between the county and the city. I've worked with Judge Buchanan for his nomination. His nomination will be voted for both in the county and the city, and I'm very excited about Mike Simpson joining the board as well. So these are my nominations for tonight. Have our questions, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-91.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Carrie Taylor to the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. I am very excited about this nominee. This nominee is Carrie Taylor. She has agreed to serve on the BGMU Board. Her family, she grew up here in Bowling Green, she's been in banking since 1991. She, her mother, was retiree from BGMU, and she's looking very much forward to serving in this capacity. So this is my nomination tonight for Carrie Taylor. Any questions? All right, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-92.
Municipal Order approving the appointments of Jeff Holman and Anthony LaPointe to the City of Bowling Green Code Enforcement and Nuisance Board.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. I'm going to refer to Commissioner Hill to introduce the next two members.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to interject these gentlemen. I've known both of these gentlemen for over 20 years, so it's my honor to nominate them tonight. Mr. Holman is the general manager in Franklin for hood container. He's been a lifelong citizen of Bowling Green. He, one reason I was so excited about Mr. Holman agreeing to do this is he goes into situations with an open mind. And then while he's making those decisions, he uses a level head while making those. Then going in to Mr. LaPointe, he is the owner of Anthony LaPointe Shelter Insurance. It's a young person, and it's so exciting that young people want to get involved in our community. And to quote something for each of their resumes, Mr. Holman says, "I've admired the tremendous growth of local industry and very proud to be a part of the growth and success of the city." Mr. LaPointe, who was chair of 2021 Soapbox Derby for Kiwanis, he states, "I continue to find ways to help make this community better." What better comments can you have from people that want to serve on our boards? So it's my pleasure to recommend them for Code Enforcement Board.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Further questions, comments, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-93.
Municipal Order approving the reappointments of Sandra McAllister and Brenda Willoughby to the Bowling Green Historic Preservation Board.
So moved, second. Oops, sorry.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. I have talked about these individuals, they have been serving on the board, and they would like to continue serving on the board. And I have, I'm giving their recommendation for their continuation tonight. Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-94.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Susie Oldham to the Housing Authority of Bowling Green.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin, or maybe it's the opposite, but got you. This one, I was able to finally talk to Susie. She confirmed that she is in Bowling Green, is not in Florida, and we had a very good conversation, and she has enjoyed serving the board. She'd like to continue serving the board, and she's willing, and I'm giving her my nomination tonight. No further questions?
Just a comment, it's an honor kind of to vote, you know, for Ms. Oldham. I'm one of the people that probably knew Ms. Oldham since I was a kid. And I knew Herbert Oldham, well, I'll take that back, she probably knew me since birth. So that's how long I've known Ms. Oldham. So it's an honor just to vote for her tonight.
Fantastic. All right, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-95.
Municipal Order authorizing renewal of bid number 2020-56 for police ballistic wear from CMS Uniforms and Equipment, Inc. of Nashville, Tennessee, and Galls LLC of Lexington, Kentucky.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Police Department went out for bid for helmets and vests last year, I believe. And the two vendors that were awarded the bid are CMS Uniforms and Galls LLC. We had an option to renew those pricing terms with them. And as you'll see in your packets, both Galls and CMS have agreed to lock in their prices for another 12 months. So we are recommending that we renew this contract with both these companies for equipment for police, mainly bulletproof vests and ballistic helmets for protection. And Chief is still... And Chief is still down stairs partying with the promotions, so I'll try answering questions, but it's pretty straightforward. It's just a renewal.
This is what we do every year, but I want to say how important it is for us to always, always keep our police and fire folks outfitted with the latest technology. So, and thanks for all you all do every day to keep us safe. Thank you.
Other comments? Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-96.
Municipal Order Authorizing Insurance Premium Payments to the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for insurance coverages of general liability, public officials' liability, law enforcement liability, automobile liability, and fiscal damage, property and workers' compensation for fiscal year 2022.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
This is our annual look at our insurance, and we have with us tonight the infamous Safety Dave, Mr. David Wisbro, our Safety and Risk Manager. He has put together a really good summary for you guys in your packets in his, in his memo. We are basically, of all lines of coverage, we're only looking at about a $28,000, $28,000, $9,000 increase on all lines, which is, I think, is pretty, pretty incredible. But on page two of his memo gives you the breakdown of the increases and decreases in each line of coverage. But David is here tonight, can answer any questions you might have, but Workers' Comp is still in excellent condition. We're still at a .6 modifier, which is unheard of still, and we attribute that to Dave's work with, with keeping us safe and, and putting all the, the good programs together. So Dave, do you have anything to add to? But he's here, can answer any questions you might have on this renewal.
It's like-
This is through KLC, KLC Insurance Services.
I was able to sit down with Dave, and it's amazing that he has made safety everybody's job in the entire city. And so he's brought safety concerns to the table that people didn't think were able to be mitigated. And so he's constantly looking for savings and making it everybody's responsibility, which brings our premiums down. So thank you for your, your work.
This Workers' Comp rating of, we were at .53, went, went to .6, but we're, it's still, compared to most other places, it's double that. And we're, we save roughly $200,000 a year with this modifier that we have for Workers' Comp, which is, says a lot. So thank you, Dave.
And Dave, I want to ditto that as well. I, I got to meet with David today, and I'm glad I got to hear some of the stories, some of the, the stories that were, I guess, kind of more disastrous, but the city stepped in and kind of helped out those families and tried to step in. So I appreciate just giving me an education of everything that you do.
All right, roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-97.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Submission of a Grant Application for Funding Through the 2021 Community Oriented Policing Services Hiring Program from the U.S. Department of Justice in an amount up to $500,000.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. And Mr. Mizel.
We would like to go after the 2021 COPS Hiring Program Grant and what it entails. This is through the, the, this is the U.S. Department of Justice, but it's for the Community Oriented Policing Services Program. And this would help us hire some additional policemen, and we would be proposing to do a match of $500,000, which is roughly 43% of the money that we could totally get. The total would be $1,161,367 if we were able to win this grant. But there, the Fed's portion would be the 661,367. So, but this would help go towards hiring additional police officers that would help meet our six-year staffing plan. And Chief Delaney, I think, is still downstairs, but Nick Cook, I'd like to thank him for working on this, and- I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is, this total grant is up to $500,000. I apologize. And then we would, we would match the ops, we would match the 661. I got that turnaround. But anyway, Nick Cook is here, can answer any of your questions you have on this, but we're hoping to get this, we crossed our fingers. We went after this, I think, last year, didn't make it, but we're, we're trying a new pitch this time, and hopefully we can get this money. Would really go a long way. But Nick can answer any more questions.
Nick, no questions, but I say this every time, and I just, you're killing it on getting like those grants for the city. So for me, I appreciate that.
Ditto, Nick. All right, no further comments. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-98.
Municipal Order Authorizing Acceptance of Grant Funds for the 2022 National Fitness Campaign Healthy City Grant Program in an amount up to $30,000 for an outdoor fitness center at Lover's Lane Soccer Complex.
So moved. A second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. And Mr. Mizel.
So we brought this to you just a couple meetings ago. It seemed like that we wanted to apply for this grant. We've already found out we've got it, so it's $30,000 to put toward a, an outdoor fitness facility, similar to the one we have at Preston Miller, but this one would be over at Lover's Lane Soccer Complex. We have been awarded $30,000. We think this project will come in around 250, but we have not put aside any funding for it yet. That will probably be in FYI '23, next year's budget. So it's a ways off, but we will work toward getting that funding together, but would like to accept this grant as seed money to get this started. And Nick worked on this, and of course, to try to answer any questions you might have, but this is an acceptance of what we discussed just a few weeks ago.
Great, lean forward.
And I'll tell you, I went to Preston Miller the last time after you guys talked about it, because there's a lot of citizens that don't even know about that park. So we went out there, and it was like, it was, it was a great just thing to, to have in our community, because when I posted it on Facebook, they was like, where is this at? Because it's for free. And if you go to like California or New York or Florida, there's parks exactly like that. So if you're trying to exercise, you could go to one of those parks for free. So it, great job. And I know Brent's not here, but I'm glad that we're getting another park like it.
All right, roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Coordinates Number BG 2021-26. This is our first reading, and it's non-binding.
Coordinates rezoning real estate. Orders rezoning attractive land containing 0.2325 acre from RM3 Townhouse Multi-Family Residential to OPR Office Professional Residential, located at 1244 Magnolia Street, presently owned by Keeping It LLC.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
This is, was a 10-0 vote with the Planning Commission to, to change this property at 1244 Magnolia Street, rezone it from RM3 to OPR for Keeping It LLC, a locally-owned business, I think is- Ben is here. I can't see him, but there he is. Can answer any question you might have.
Great, any questions at this time? It was a 10-0 vote, our planning zoning. Questions, roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-99.
Municipal Order Approving Appropriations for Specified Eligible Agencies for Fiscal Year 2022.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
I'll, I'll say a brief, real quick, and then I'm going to turn it over to Katie, but the purpose of this, this is in your budget that we got first reading on. These are to go ahead and give us the okay to pay these out during the year, so we don't have to come back to you every single meeting, every time we need to pay out more than $50,000. So Katie can go over, give you an overview of this and answer any questions you might have.
As the city manager said, each of these are approved in the budget process, and were presented at our May 15th, May 18th presentation. They are the only 10 eligible agencies that I can receive applications from based on the policies that the board has approved. And majority of these are the same. We did limit a 3% increase for those who had requested an increase. One also requested a decrease. So basically, we're very close to last year's dollar value. And as the city manager said, we make payment quarterly to these agencies starting in July, and they all, they are all required to provide performance measurement updates to us quarterly as well, and I share those with the board. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
I see at least one agency, and I apologize if the others. Can we please hear which agencies are in our audience? Because that really means a lot to me.
Sure. So of those listed here?
Yes. Which agencies are in our audience?
So do we have anybody from Economic Development Authority?
We've got human rights, and we've got Planning Commission here currently.
There were several at our, at our budget meeting, drug task force and a couple others.
I just want to say, thank you all for being here. We're voting on it, means a lot.
It does.
Thank you very much.
So just a point, a lot of nonprofits come to us as, you know, commissioners and elected officials, and they're asking us, city, to support, you know? So what I will say is that these services here provide tangible services that our city doesn't provide, meaning our city has partners that provide them for us. And so we say thank you to our partners because we can't do it alone. And sometimes the government doesn't answer and do things in the best efficiency, but your models do, and we appreciate your partnership and what you bring to the table. So thank you very much to our partners.
And I just want to add on, I'm grateful for those quarterly reports. It's such a wonderful thing to hear, the positive impact the community tax dollars are doing in our community. And so I know that doesn't take a small amount of time to do that, so I want you to know I do read them, and I appreciate the information that you're sharing with us, because it is really exciting about the impact that our, our entire community is having together.
All right, roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Thank you very much. Municipal Order Number 2021-100.
Municipal Order Approving Amendments to the Administrative Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual for Classified Employees.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
Like the budget, we routinely have to make changes and adjustments to our personnel manual when things, we, we see things that we need to change. And so before you tonight is the version effective July 1 that we're proposing to you. We sent this out to you several weeks ago, so you'd give it, get a head start. It's a kind of a lengthy document. But highlighted in the beginning of your, your packets with the memo from Erin to myself is a good summary chart of some, I think, are pretty minor changes to our personnel manual. Kind of gives you the highlights. I think there's eight or, eight or 10 changes we're proposing, and Erin has done a good, good job of putting that together. And Erin is still here with us, so I'm going to hand it over to her, or she can answer any questions you might have on our personnel manual. So this is going to be effective July 1. This is about an annual, annual thing we do now to keep, keep up to date.
Hey, any comments, questions this time? No comments? Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-101.
Municipal Order Approving Construction and Accepting Maintenance of Brownstone Subdivision.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
Brownstone Subdivision, the developer has approached us about accepting their subdivision under city maintenance. This is a relatively new subdivision out off of Nashville Road on, off of McClellan, McClellan Road. And inspections have been done by planning and zoning as well as city staff. We are looking at a roughly .32 miles of roadway and right-of-way with sidewalk and storm sewer put into place. There are maybe a few vacant lots that, that do not have sidewalks until construction happens, but there is a $10,000 cash bond in place to cover that if, if that does not happen later on when construction is completed. So recommend accepting this subdivision under city maintenance. And Greg, Greg Meredith is here tonight, and along with Ben Peterson, that did the inspections, and we think this is ready to go. There is a map in your packets that shows you the proximity and kind of the layout of the, the new subdivision of Brownstone.
Questions at this time? Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-102.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Approving the Beautify 65 Agreement between the City of Bowling Green, Warren County Fiscal Court, Operation Pride, Inc., and the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So as you all may recall, we, we brought this to you at your January BOC retreat. Mr. Johnny Webb, former mayor and longtime board member of Operation Pride, has raised a lot of money, privately, private money for this project along I-65 to beautify our five entrances into the city. We decided that we needed to formalize this agreement for, for our contribution annually between us, the county, and Convention Visitors Bureau. We are pledging to put $150,000, up to $150,000. We're hoping it won't be quite that much along, once we get the state's annual allotment that they were spending on that section of I-65 to go towards beautification efforts along our five exits of 20 through 30, if you're heading south to north, if you're heading north. And a lot of this is already underway. You'll see the nice horse fencing and new trees along these exits. And this is the agreement that Hillary worked on. She was a big, the author of this, worked with the county and CBB to, to make sure everything is in writing. We put in here the payment schedule, what we'll need to, to make payments, the term, and we'll try to answer any questions y'all might have on this agreement, but we wanted to make it formal and put it in writing.
I, I do want to say something and maybe ask a question. This is a perfect example of public-private partnerships and, and citizens going to work and rallying other citizens. There was a lot of money raised, and it looks great, and it sure is going to help our tourism, and folks are going to get off the interstate, and hey, some of them might just stay. That does happen. But does the state provide for increase over the years for this, for their, their portion?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that question, but I think their, their budget was roughly 70, 80, $70,000 to $80,000 a year, and they were only bush hogging it three to four times a year, and it just, they're, you know, bare, bare minimum. We think we can take that, or, or the, the group thinks they can take that money and put it into this annual maintenance budget and really do a lot more with it, so.
Right, right.
Along with our money and the counties and CBBS.
Yeah, the idea is to make it look like a manicured park or a yard or something. It's going to be absolutely stunning for our city to really stand out. When you're going down I-65, every town doesn't stand out, but.
I think the county is, is kind of taking the lead on what they call the gateways of Exit 20 coming from the south and Exit, I'm sorry, Exit, yeah, 20 coming from the south, 30 coming from the north. You'll see some extra stuff there that they've had to buy some, some land to put up, but that was all, all covered with the upfront money that Mr. Webb, Johnny Webb, raised over $2 million, $2 million, which is unbelievable.
He, he never runs out of energy.
But it tells you how much, it tells you too, how much our community cares about what, what we look like.
That is exactly right.
It said a lot.
So if, if Mayor Webb is watching, I want to say a personal heartfelt thank you on behalf of- of.
A lot, a lot of work on this.
A lot, on a lot of different things. He just doesn't run out of energy. It's amazing. He's just great. Keeps on giving.
So Mayor Alcott, let this be a lesson to you. Even years after you're mayor, we're expecting great things from you still.
When you hear about Mayor Hardcastle making millions of dollars, and I've been in public my entire, served in the Air Force, but maybe, who knows, God willing. But, you know, I will say, of the commissioners, it was United Front. We all agreed that back in January, and united about what the public has done for us, what Johnny Webb and the community's rallying, and we understand that, and we are all coming united together for this. So with our county partners.
Do we know when we'll be able to celebrate the final sort of unveiling of the first phase?
I hope so. I would hope within the next year, everything would get put into place. So but they're even looking at, you know, there's a lot of, they're looking at safety issues for the maintenance crews with the slopes and, you know, unmanned mowers to protect the workers to keep it maintained. So we're pulling out all the stops. So it's looking good. So I'm hoping within the next year or so, I would think most of it will be put into play. It's 10 miles, so it's going to take a little while, but.
Great. No further comments. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-103.
Municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with the Downtown Redevelopment Authority, Inc., to lease Circus Square Park for concerts in the park.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
So this is our standard annual lease that we do with DRA to provide the city concerts in the park. We're looking at 12 dates here, starting on June 25th on Friday nights at Circus Square Park, and to go through September 10. And Hillary worked on this agreement with DRA along with Brent Childers. And we're excited to bring concerts in the park back this year. We had to take a break from them last year with the COVID pandemic, so it's exciting to get these back in place. So the agreement's in your packet, and it's pretty straightforward. Not much change from prior years.
Thank you very much. Any further comments, questions? It's a longstanding partnership. We'd like to see it continue. Know if the community's ready. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-104.
Municipal order authorizing the Housing Authority of Bowling Green to retain the city's portion of the payment in lieu of taxes for the 2020 tax year in a total amount of $25,185.88.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner, sorry, Hill. Thank you for conceding. I heard like four at once, but all good. We're all unanimous there. Mr. Mizel.
So about 50 years ago, or 49, the Housing Authority was born, and Abraham started it up, and, no, I'm kidding. Abraham wasn't around then. How old were you? No, never mind. It started as the Bowling Green Housing Commission and was transformed into the Housing Authority of Bowling Green, what it is today. And I believe Abraham, what, he have 700 or so units, more than?
656.
656, to be exact. And so we don't charge the Housing Authority, they're not on the tax roll, they're a nonprofit entity. So we have never put them on a tax roll for city or county property taxes. However, a long, long time ago, they agreed to pay the payment in lieu of tax agreement, the pilot. And for many, many, many years, the city has agreed to give our portion of that payment back to Mr. Williams and his program to service kids after school and their after-school programming. And it's been a tremendous program over the years and helped a lot of kids in our community, a huge impact. And so this is our annual give back to our Housing Authority for their portion of the pilot payment that they have calculated. That's all in your packet. It's based on number of units and values, and it's a pretty complex calculation. But the summary is in there on what we're giving back is the $25,185, allowing them to keep that for their program after school that they run. So of course, Mr. Williams is in the back of the room and can answer any questions you might have, but recommend this for your approval.
I was going to say thanks to Abraham for all he does for our community. And all kidding aside, we do joke a lot together, but seriously, being serious here for this one brief minute with you, thank you so much, Abraham. And also, our Human Rights Commission, I mean, you know, those are things that we, they're essential to our community. And so it's, you know, it's with pride that we support. And so he's built quite the empire down there and is always so open for people to come and feel and touch and see. And I'm sure he would be for citizens as well, and not just elected officials. Anybody that wants to learn more, it's a very impressive program. So thank you, Abraham, very much.
I want to ditto that. You know, I grew up around that church area, the Church Street area, the Parker Bennett area, and I know what that area looked like back in the 80s. And just to have Mr. Williams to transform that area has meant a lot. When we were growing up, all we had was that center. I mean, not, yeah, it was the center. But we also had like this pool that was over there. I forget what street it's on, but it was right next to the center. And in the 80s, at some point, it was really, really bad. They had like drugs and just different things over there. And I know, like, since you've been there, you have transformed that area. And you've also given, like, people who may not have access to have homes or affordable homes, to at least have somewhere to sleep with their families. So you know how I feel about you, and kudos to keep doing that and trying to give people that access.
I would just like to say, during my time in Frankfurt, one of my responsibilities was to be on the Kentucky Housing Corporation Board of Directors. And while I was learning about that organization, I was like, well, what do you do for Bowling Green? They laughed in my face and said, you don't need us in Bowling Green. You have Abraham Williams and the Housing Authority. So you're known all over our state, Abraham. Thank you so much for what you do for our community.
And at risk of making Mr. Williams' head too big to fit in this room anymore, I will add a few comments and just saying, since this particular funds are going towards after-school program, and we have all these open jobs, I just can't thank you for providing a safe place for kids to go. You know, childcare is such an issue for, you know, families and parents to be able to get into the workforce. So just thank you for that invaluable service that you give our kids to have a safe place, and we know what the impact that has on our economy. So thank you in particular for this program.
Abraham, I can't let it go by, but we went to the learning-from-home model that we were forced to as a community. This offered services and internet and Wi-Fi that was much needed to continue that education. So thank you. That was already in place. All right. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-105.
Municipal order approving agreement between the City of Bowling Green and Central Region Innovation and Commercialization Center.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Thank you, Mayor. Many of you should be familiar with the Central Region Innovation and Commercialization Center out on Nashville Road. I am happy to welcome back Buddy Steen tonight. Buddy is an old acquaintance, old partner. We used to, he used to do some good stuff for us years ago. He went on to do some other new things, take on some new challenges, but he is back at the center. And Buddy approached Katie and I back months ago about partnering up again. And Buddy has a program going again out there on Nashville Road for tech jobs, create startup jobs that will create high-tech type jobs in our community and higher-paying jobs. And I'd like to ask Buddy just to step up for a few minutes and give you just a summary or highlights of this program. But we are proposing to partner with Buddy annually for five years to help his, get some new high-tech jobs in our community, bring them to the incubation center. We already have companies in our community that started there years ago under Buddy's leadership, and I'm happy to have Buddy back out there and to pick back up where he left off. Buddy, you want to kind of tell them a little bit about your program?
Basically, we're about creating better opportunities and jobs. Everything boils down to that. Talent creation, talent retention, talent recruitment. We're close enough to Nashville now that we can actually mine some of that talent here to bring high-tech companies to Bowling Green. So we're very focused on that. We've got incredibly good folks in economic development and recruiting typical companies, and we partner with them very, very close. But our job is to look at the scalable companies, the companies that have a national or international market. It's a special type of recruitment. You know, you're talking about companies that have to potentially raise money from investors, so they have to condition themselves. And we'll take, basically as a client, we'll take any company, whether it starts with an idea or someone that has a company that wants to transition to a larger market, you know, or a university technology. Thank goodness, we have Western Kentucky University. We leverage the technology there, we leverage the support there. And this particular funding is actually, amplifies the state funding that we received. We won back our state money for what we call the innovation hubs in Kentucky Innovation Network. And we just won that again this year. So glad to be here.
County is also doing the.
The county is matching what you're proposing.
Welcome back and congratulations.
I'm so excited that we are partnering with you in this work. I just hear all the time about how much our community does want to have those types of high-tech jobs. I'm talking to students at WKU who are graduating. We are losing so many of them because we don't have some of the jobs that they are training for and wanting to have. And so I'm so grateful that you are going to be, you know, working with all the partners to see if we can diversify our economy more. I know diversity in your economy and how you, you know, get your tax base is really important. So I'm grateful for you delivering that for us. And just excited about the new companies and jobs in the tech industry that you will be able to bring with this program. So I can't wait to hear about how it's going and the, can't wait for your first announcement.
And I want to ditto that. You know, one thing that I looked at, it was like Chattanooga, Tennessee, and they changed, you know, the whole city. They had their citywide gig that they had, but they also had an innovation hub. And to bring something like that to here to Bowling Green, we're future-proofing the jobs, because we know there's going to be many jobs that's going to automation. So this is something I think we definitely need in our city.
I'd like to say, I agree. I think this is a great opportunity. Thank you. I would like to ask our city official, our manager, who in the city is going to be working with him? Are we going to establish goals that we would like for them to meet? How are we going to know if this is a success?
It's written in the agreement that every October, around October 1st, they're going to have to provide a report. So similar to the performance measurements that we have from our eligible agencies, this Buddy will also be providing some specific criteria, which is outlined in the agreement, to report on back to the board.
But we do not have specific goals. I saw that he's going to report. So am I going to, if he brings us five companies, is that considered good? Or is it only going to be 10 companies that's considered a good job?
That is really up to your particular opinion of it. This is a brand-new partnership that we're having, so we didn't establish any specific goals right away. But that could be something that, as we move through the five-year agreement, we can get more specific with.
I don't want to put any pressure on Buddy, but I look at it dollar-for-dollar, 22.5, and I think Buddy can bring us back 22.5. So.
I like that. Okay.
That's kind of, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a big ask, but it's, it's one thing we'll look at. We're also going to look at how, what we missed on, and why did we miss getting a company here? So we're going to look at a lot of different things. And Buddy's going to kind of keep us informed and tell, let us know how things are going and do an annual report. But in your, in your agreement, thank you to Hillary for putting this agreement together with Buddy. But on page two of your agreement, under the scope of services 1F, we have kind of hit on three measurements. The new, number of new opportunities and jobs created, the number of startups and investments created, whether it be in dollars or numbers. And then third, we threw in just projected new city withholdings when we do land a company and what that's going to look like to us to kind of keep our eyes on the ball with this. And I think Buddy's going to come and shoot straight with us and tell us where we're at.
And I will say, I really am interested in learning about what you learn as you're trying to recruit these companies, about, you know, why would they choose Bowling Green? And do we have what, if you're having these conversations, are, does Bowling Green have this? Does Bowling Green have that? You know, those conversations that you're having, you don't need to wait a year. I'm really curious and really want to know, what are some things that we don't even realize that we could be doing to help attract these jobs? So please stay in communication with us, and we're excited to move forward.
Thank you, Buddy. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-106.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the execution of a permanent distribution line and temporary construction easements with Atmos Energy Corporation related to the realignment and installation of new pipeline and related facilities along road frontage at Lampkin Park on Morgantown Road.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel, please.
So I received this request from Atmos Energy a few weeks ago. They are needing to put a new gas line in along Morgantown Road. At first, I thought it was going to affect our Morgantown Road fire station and mess up our nice concrete out there. But turns out, chief straightened me out on that. It was on the other side of the road on Lampkin Park. So not, not anything significant to us. It's just the grassy area along the road. So they are going to give us compensation for 52.50 of this right-of-way along Morgantown Road that hits in the, on that side of Lampkin Park, just right along the road, right, road there. So Hillary helped me out with this, too, has reviewed it, and we think it's good to go along with Greg Meredith. And so recommending we accept this and go ahead and let them use that easement right-of-way.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-27. This is our first reading and is non-binding. Mr. Mizel.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number four to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
Going to yield the floor to our Assistant City Manager, CFO Katie Schaller-Ward.
This is the last budget amendment for fiscal year 21. So as we try to do that, we try to clean up several things that have happened throughout this year. When we presented the budget for '22 back in May, we had indicated that we are outperforming our projections and revenue collections for fiscal year 21 by about 20%. So we're recommending to take that excess revenue and some underspending that we have and put that towards some future capital projects. Because we don't know sustainability, how long this can happen, those are one-time costs, and then we can pre-save and hopefully not have to finance those projects in the future. The other big piece of this particular budget amendment is the acceptance of the American Rescue Plan funding that the city received directly. This is a half payment. You had already approved about $16 million to be part of the application that was put through. They are providing half of it now and then half of it in about a year. So 8.2, 8.3 million dollars. All this is doing is accepting it to put it on our books, and it's going to be in its own fund. We're not recommending use of that money at this time. It's just accepting it and showing that we have it. We will have to report on that money to the U.S. Treasury in August, I believe, for anything that's occurred between the time we received it to the end of January, July 31st. So that'll be our first report, and it probably, hopefully, it'll probably be fairly simple in terms of just investments and that sort of thing. So any investment that we can make off that money is ours to keep. So we are going to be looking at investing it in some incremental amounts, short-term, so that we can use it when we want to use it for the needs that we have. Just briefly, we are still trying to figure out what it can be used for. U.S. Treasury is still putting out their guidelines. Those won't be final until July. So I imagine we will do a work session with this board to identify all the uses that are eligible for that funding so that we can go from there. But that's pretty much it. The other items are just small cleanup items related to some grants and some donations that we've received.
Katie. Questions at this time? No comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey? Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Coordinates Number BG 2021-23 is our second reading and is binding.
Orders closing a public right-of-way. Orders approving the closing of an unimproved right-of-way formerly known as Main Street Road and located between the intersection of Old Baron River Road and Veterans Memorial Lane.
Still moved.
Second.
This was moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. This was a five and oh vote last time. If there's any further questions or discussion at this moment, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Coordinates Number BG 2021-24 is our second reading and is binding.
Orders adopting annual city budget. Orders adopting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022 by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Also, this was a five and oh at the last reading. And unless there's any further discussion or questions at this time, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Coordinates Number BG 2021-25, second reading and is binding.
Orders relating to classification pay schedules. Orders admitting to classification pay schedules G for general classified, F for fire, P for police, D for department head management, and U for unclassified part-time employees and authorizing pay increases for fiscal year 2022.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. This was also a five and oh vote. Unless there's any further discussion or questions at this time, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Our, before we ask, I'm going to ask if we had any public comments, but the last commission meeting about two weeks ago, we had a one-hour discussion about our helping agencies, helping out with homeless.